Okay, we are on air and it's 5:30 so we'll go ahead and get started with the city council study session for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. We have two items on the agenda and first one is going to be a discussion regarding Flock Safety Camera Solutions for the community. And I believe we have a presentation here today, so we'll go ahead and get started.
All right. So my name is Major Jamie Shattuck. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm the Patrol Bureau Commander. And I brought a couple of experts with me tonight from Flock to kind of give us an overview of what the system actually does. This is Hector.
This is Jim. And I'll let you guys get started. We'll give you guys a presentation on what this system's kind of about. And if you guys have any questions, we would love to answer them for you.
All right.
Awesome. Well, good evening. My name is Hector Soliman Valdez. I'm a Community Engagement Manager with Flock Safety. My team is responsible for just these type of conversations, right? To kind of explaining what our technology does, how we're helping law enforcement solve crime, and answer any questions that you all may have, or the community as well. And then Jim is our-
I'm the Territory Sales Manager for Kansas and Oklahoma.
Awesome. So he's a little bit more local than I am. I'm based out of the West Coast. Today, I wanted to start off by talk, giving you guys a little bit of information on Flock Safety as a company. And if you could just go to the next slide. We are a Georgia-based company. We were founded when our CEO and his neighbors were victims of multiple crimes. And his neighborhood was seeing a lot of car break-ins, burglaries, and other crimes that you see in large cities. And what, you know, him and his neighbors saw is that they had a ton of footage. They had Ring cameras, like many of you probably have, all kinds of video evidence that they provided to their local PD. But they, you know, would tell them, hey, we'd love to have the time to, you know, look for this red Honda. Hopefully, nobody drives a red Honda in here, just using it as an example. But without a plate, there's really nothing for us to go on, right? So what he started doing is saying, okay, it seems like this technology's been around for a while. As many of you probably do know, license plate readers have been around for over 30 years. At many shopping centers or, you know, game venues or football games, et cetera, you'll have your license plate read. But really, the difference or what he found out is that these cameras traditionally were tens of thousands of dollars. You'd have to, a city would have to purchase it, just like your iPhone next year, it might be obsolete. They also have to maintain it. And so he was looking for something that, or a way for his neighborhood to kind of help law enforcement. So what he did is set out to build a license plate reader that was affordable enough for his HOA. So that's why, you know, they went with a service as a software, a software-as-a-service type model. So our cameras are 2,500 per year, so it's affordable enough for the private sector, for a neighborhood to have that kind of public-private partnership. That includes installation, before that permitting installation, maintenance, the software upgrades, customer service, et cetera. And so we started off by selling to businesses, HOAs, so that they could share footage with law enforcement. But the cameras were the same level or same quality that police departments needed. So, you know, we started selling to law enforcement as well. Today, we're in over 1,400 communities or police departments all throughout the country, and, you know, just growing exponentially. Here locally, we're in over a dozen police departments in many private communities as well. That being said, got a little bit of background on our company. Next slide. One more slide. We talk about the why. Just kind of really quick recap. You know, there's limited police resources. Obviously, officers want to solve every single crime that, you know, is presented to them. So this type of technology serves as a force multiplier. We have seen that crime is on the rise nationally. And what police need again is to capture or have evidence that is objective and that can be provided to them while still maintaining transparency. Next slide. So how does this technology actually work, right? ALPR, Automatic License Plate Readers. What does that look like? You can just hit the next slide. Top right-hand corner, that's what actual footage looks like. It's the back of a vehicle. It is a license plate. It is not people. It is not facial recognition. It's not traffic enforcement, right? So really important to note that that's what the footage looks like. Your department is able to filter, right, based on descriptions, including make, color, et cetera. Next slide. Also, it's tapping a little bit into what the technology is not. Again, so not tied to PII, Personal Identifiable Information. What does that actually mean in practice? That means that Flock itself has no personal identifiable information within its system, right? So we're not providing your police department with information saying, hey, John Smith is in this vehicle. There's no DMV records, et cetera. But we are telling them, hey, this is a vehicle that matches, you know, either a description of one that you're looking for, or is on a wanted hot list, right? So it's a stolen vehicle, et cetera. Over 70% of crimes, there's a vehicle associated with it. So that's why it's important, you know, if there's a stolen vehicle, A, that's a crime already. And other crimes may be, will be getting committed as well with that. As I mentioned before, this is not used for traffic enforcement. And also, really important with Flock, our standard retention is dirty days. And so what that means in practice is your police department has enough time to search for evidence. Let's say somebody is out on vacation for a couple of weeks. They're able to, you know, report the crime on week three. Your police department still has enough time to investigate, pull footage, et cetera. It's not long-term retention of data. At that point, the data is hard deleted. It's not available to anyone to access at that point. So really kind of striking that balance of privacy as well. Next slide. And there's three aspects to this technology. It's proactive. So your police department will receive alerts in their vehicle's computer within 20 seconds, right? And once a vehicle passes their camera that's wanted, right, it's a stolen vehicle, there's a felony warrant on that vehicle, your police department will be alerted. It's investigative. So just how I mentioned how we got started, many times, those are the types of, that's the type of evidence that your police department will get, right? They'll have some Ring footage, a description, you know, let's say even it's a hit-and-run, et cetera. I saw what the vehicle looks like, right? And so they'll be able to use that information. It's also important to note that with investigations, right, having that's real-time information is really important because in any given month, and Captain Shatter can talk about this a little bit later, you know, you may have, let's say, 10 burglaries in your city. That doesn't mean that there's 10 different people performing that crime. So if you're able to find evidence quickly, make an arrest potentially, you're now able to prevent some of those additional crimes that will happen in any given month. And this also serves as a deterrent, right? So over a dozen cities in Oklahoma with this technology already, 1,400 nationwide, you will be adding this as a deterrent as well for your community. Next slide. Now, it's important to talk about how we mitigate for risks, though. Next slide. And it's really important to note that with Flock, unlike legacy providers, all of the footage is owned by your city, by your department. Only they can share that information within the system for legal law enforcement purposes, right? So Flock will never sell or share that data. It's also taking out the human bias out of crime solving, right? So this is objective data. This word now, you know, your officers are not having to say, is this a vehicle that I'm interested in, or I believe may be suspicious? We are now proactively saying, hey, this is a vehicle that is on a wanted list. It's done something that's objectively illegal. All of the data is stored securely in the AWS cloud, end-to-end encrypted. This is the highest level of security. Some of the same servers used by the FBI and CIA, for example. A search reason is required, and there's an audit trail. This part, I want to kind of stop at for a second because it's really important. Your department is either drafting a policy or may have already put in place a policy, right, that is going to require for them to enter in a case number or a reference number anytime that they search the system. Our system requires that they enter, you know, one of these things. And so it's important to say, the technology has to be built in a way that has checks and balances, and so does good policy, right? And so how does a case number get created? There has to be a call. There has to be an incident. So there is a checks and balance there, and then it's able to be audited by, you know, the chief and other designees. As I mentioned earlier, there's no PII, no personal identifiable information. So just want to also note, this cannot be used for traffic enforcement, registration. There's no button that, you know, in six months will say, hey, let's go ahead and turn this on for you, because this is not information that's in their system. And then I want to talk a little bit about the Transparency Portal, which is the next slide. This is unique to Flock. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. This is unique to Flock. What this will allow your department to do is post their policy online, provide residents with real-time information on how many searches are they performing? Who are they search, who are they sharing with? How many hot list alerts are they receiving, really? So any resident will be able to, with this webpage that we'll create, and your department will be able to put on their Facebook, on their page, et cetera, see in real time kind of what the use is and what this can be used for. Next slide. Now, how is this helping solve crime here? Let's go ahead and click on the next slide. As I mentioned, there's over a dozen departments in Oklahoma using this. I want to start off with Tulsa Police Department. So in their first two months, it's a large city, they recovered 28 stolen vehicles, six stolen guns. They had over 400,000 recovered stolen property, and they arrested a homicide suspect. I want to read verbatim what Chief Franklin is quoted as saying, just that I think it's really important. This technology has basically been like, we have operated in the dark. And flipping this technology on is like flipping the light switch on. That's actually something that we get reported a lot, right? Departments will say, hey, we have 20 stolen vehicles every given month, and we're able to capture two, four, et cetera. It's really interesting to see how this is kind of across the board. Many times, there's so many stolen vehicles that are undetected initially, and also, so they'll detect more. So you'll see that bump there. They'll also be able to close more of those cases or clear more of those cases. So it's really interesting to see that pattern. And that's kind of what the chief is alluding to there. Next slide. Locust Grove, which is a smaller city, they recovered 10 stolen vehicles. They arrested two people in a vehicle with stolen narcotics, or with narcotics, and they helped identify suspects from modest state that had, that were wanted. Next slide. Now, this is a no-brainer as far as stolen vehicles, right? It's obviously technology that can really help with that. But I want to highlight this case out of San Bruno, California, because it really shows how this can be used as a preventative tool. This made national headlines. They tried to rob this store. It's a jewelry store, but they had armed security, so he was able to, you know, guard the store and protect it. The, what the police department believed, however, was that they would return and be ready, escalate their level of violence. San Bruno Police Department is a Flock customer, so what they did is that they put a custom hot list on that vehicle. As soon as it entered into the shopping center, they were able to make a stop and arrest those folks. So thereby preventing the crime from occurring. And even more important, from escalating, right? So escalating in the level of violence. Next slide. And something that I like to say, too, is that councils, as you're kind of thinking about this, a lot of times it's like, well, how are we going to measure success, right? Is it going to be a number of stolen vehicles, number of, you know, kind of goods retrieved, et cetera? There's also this other immeasurable part, which we see often, in silver alerts and amber alerts. This one specifically is extremely impactful to me because it's a stranger-on-stranger reduction. This doesn't happen very, you know, often. Usually, amber alert to somebody in their family. In this case, this mother was pushing her child in his stroller, when two masked and armed individuals fought her, you know, at gunpoint, took her child. She had no idea who these people were, you know? There's going on about her normal day when this happened. And she didn't even see the plate. She just saw that she had a description of the vehicle. Using that description, she gave it to Chambly PD. We are a Georgia-based company, very strong network there. And she gave them that description. They issued an amber alert on that vehicle. They immediately started also searching the cameras. They found a suspect vehicle, put on an alert, and they made a felony stop and arrest in Alabama, once stayed over, all as you can see, within six hours, right? So really important in this case, the child is the evidence, right, to have, you know, to bring him back safely. And luckily, in most crimes, as a lot of officers will tell you, you don't really have a true happy ending in the sense that no one's really made whole. In this case, this child won't remember it, and those folks are behind bars. It turns out, they wanted to raise a child as their own, and decided that that was the way that they were going to do that. But luckily, I don't think they'll have that idea again because they're Joe. With that, I did a ton of talking at you all. Sorry about that. But wanted to kind of give you guys a ton of information and then just answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that. We've got a couple of questions. Councilwoman Grant?
I want to circle back to what you said about make an arrest potentially. How many end up as false leads or an error rate? And I only say that because I watched somebody get stopped at a local gas station, and they were not the person who had a warrant in the vehicle they were in.
Yeah.
So I know there can be some misses.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So the way that our system works is that it identifies a vehicle, right? Let's say it's on a wanted list. It says this is the plate. It actually will tell the police officer, hey, this is the probability, 98% probability that this is a correct vehicle. So, you know, it's kind of highlighting that to them. The important thing, right, so we'll give you the probability. The important thing is their policy. So when this alert comes in, you're not to auto dispatch, and Officer Shatter can kind of chime in there, not to auto dispatch, you have to call in dispatch. There's checks and balances there before you actually, you know, kind of investigate further. And you can, if you want to elaborate on how it would work here on the ground.
So that's exactly right. So if we were to get an alert from the Flock camera system, what we would have to do is we would have to call in to verify with our dispatch that that is actually the tag that has been reported stolen, or the car that's been reported stolen. We can't only use the notification from Flock. We actually have to verify it through NCIS, which is our centralized computer system, which is, that is accurate. So we can't use only the camera system. It only gives us a starting point to locate the correct vehicle.
Okay. So still, are there, like, do you keep track of an error rate for the ones that you go through all the processes, and then, oh, it's not that? Like, nothing's infallible?
Of course. That's why, so we measure it in probability, and that's why we provide that percentage. It's really hard to insert, right, like an overall, in an overall way because there's a lot of different factors, right?
I guess it would depend on each department and city.
Well, that, right, the important thing is-
We're not very, we're not as dense as some places in California.
Yeah, so that's a good point. The important thing is there, the system, just like you said, will, is going to kind of say, hey, this is how sure I am. The important thing is the policy, right? Making sure that the policy is sound. And then just-
So what do you think our percentage is? Like, are you going to say it 98%?
When we run into areas, like, our system's good. It's like if the vehicle's been reported stolen with Purcell, and the vehicle's recovered, but the people from Purcell didn't take it back out of the system, then that would be an information area that we run into now. So that's very low, but it does, I mean, it does happen from time to time. But it does not, it's not the, it's not the computer's fault. It's the human error that whoever's entering the information, if that, if that does occur from time to time.
What's our threshold, you think, for this policy? Like, what percentage of probability are you going to feel comfortable, like, doing that?
I think that if, we're going to go, so if they say, if it hits on a car that says, hey, this car is stolen, and the officer gets behind the car and runs the tag, and it shows stolen through our national computer, then we're going to consider that reliable information. If we, if we don't have that, we're not going to stop the car.
Yeah, and Councilwoman, if we go back to the slide that shows the actual footage, just so, because I, just to kind of show you, they're receiving, I guess, go all the way back to just the footage.
Tell me where, just tell me where to stop.
I'll tell you where to stop, yeah.
You're talking about where the car is, the picture of the car.
Yep, right there. So that's what the footage will look like, right? They're going to have the alert, the metadata that they'll have is saying, that will say the license plate. They have to now call that license plate in. They're also visually seeing, does the, does what the system telling me, tell me, match what's on the ground, right, like in front of me? And so that's part of that process that happens in real time. And so that's like kind of the important human portion.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Torrell?
You know, I like the idea of having these cameras, but my question is that I'm looking at the online pictures. How flimsy are they? They seem to me to be very flimsy, sitting on that rod and the solar panel. So is it a steel rod? Is it something that's fixed in the ground with cement? So how sturdy, because we got winds. Look, last Sunday, got a tornado, right? So how sturdy would that device be?
I live in Kansas. We have strong winds, too. So it's a 12-foot DOT breakaway pole. It's approved by the DOT. It's eight inches wide, two feet deep below the frost line, and three bags of concrete. It's up, it's able to withstand up to 90, 95 mile-an-hour winds. But I think the most important thing is when situations like that happen as part of our subscription, and a solar panel accidentally blows off, comes out and gets replaced, and it gives a help notice to the department itself.
Okay. And how sturdy is the actual device from debris? Saying 95 mile-per-hour winds, and you got-
IP-67.
Okay, good. I know, I know what that is. Can you explain it, the rest of them?
I'm a little technical geek. So IP-67 is down to minus 22 degrees, 23, plus or minus. And then we also, in very cold areas, put what's called a penguin pack, which is a heated battery pack, which will support it as well internally. And then it's dustproof and waterproof to two feet.
Now, I saw some models that are carb-mounted, too. Is that something you guys offer?
We have a, we are partnered with Axon. And so through the, they use our software on their Fleet 3 cameras.
Okay. Now, the 30 days data retention, is that something that we control, or is that something you control? So we, so if we want to extend that, is that something we can increase retention period on ourselves, or is that something fixed by your company?
Yeah, so that's our standard retention policy. If your council votes for more, that's something that we would then through Jim arrange. I think there is a small price increase because there's more data involved there. But, but that is up to the city. Our standard is at 30 days.
Thank you. No more questions from now.
Do you, Councilman Ball?
So for a city our size, with interstate access, numerous on-ramps, off-ramps, two or three different highways coming into town, exactly how many cameras we need for this to be effective? And where would we place them?
How much, how many have we identified for this space?
So one of the things to take into consideration is that the way the statute is written for LPR technology right now, that anything that's on an ODOT right-of-way is only tied to uninsured motorists. And uninsured motorists are tied to the DMV. We're not in that business. So we don't put them on ODOT right-aways. What we plan to do is 13 cameras surrounding the ingresses into Norman. I'm also meeting with Cleveland County tomorrow to supplement their locations as well. We've identified 13 locations that are ingresses into the city.
Okay. That's, oh, right now?
Yeah, and we work with, to identify those locations, we have a deployment specialist who are past law enforcement, crime analysts, who are taking a look at patterns in conjunction with your police department, right? So working together with them to identify those locations.
Okay. And that's, how, what's the scale of that camera on the picture?
It's about the size of a football.
Okay. And they're, I guess they're located in a place where they're not easily accessible to any random person?
Yeah. So there, and it depends on what the final deployment is. We sometimes install it in existing infrastructure. Typically, let's say 10 to 12 feet up.
Okay. On, would it be on any of our utility poles or your own?
So what we do is if you have an agreement or city-owned poles that you want to install them on, with written permission, we will put them on those poles anywhere from 10 to 12 feet up in the air. For more security information, there's a GPS built into it, and it is motion activated.
Councilman Ball?
And do we pay any kind of warnings to our public that this area, our city is monitored by Flock? Your vehicle will be-
That's a decision that, you know, that-
The privacy issue's a big deal for me. Government, you know, having all of our citizens' information, I'm not a big fan of it. So that's why I just want to make sure that the citizens are fully aware of what's going on, that they know that their vehicles are being photographed, and why.
Yeah. So as far as Flock is concerned, we're happy to work with the police department. That's something we do quite often, to have follow-up meetings once cameras are installed, and just make sure that folks know, hey, these are, this is what these cameras are for. This is what they're doing. It's to solve crime, just and answer any questions as well. So we're happy to do that. And I don't know if the police already have a plan.
That's one thing I really like about the system here, is that we actually don't have the information at the police department.
Right, yes, but the case number is-
Yeah, we actually have to, there's fingerprints on, it shows exactly who's accessed, you know, what information, and you have to have a reason why we do it. It's like we do now. We have that same kind of protocol with all the other information systems that we have. So that really put my mind at ease as far as people tracking me or doing things like that. But like, we can't do that because we don't have a reason to. And so that's one thing I really like about the system itself.
Okay. Councilman Grant?
Did you have a slide that addressed this? Do you sell any data or collect any data?
Yeah, the next, the next couple of slides, we don't sell any data. The data is owned by you all. We also don't share any of the data. So only your police department can share the data with other law enforcement agencies within the system. And all of that is audited, audited as well. And so that's, that's an important, you know, difference with Flock.
The Transparency Portal that Hector showed is a forward-facing page. And you can look at an example in Kansas. Park City Police Department in Kansas has it on their web's page. It's right by my house. And it basically says, who are we sharing our networks with? How many cameras we have? What it's used for? What it's not used for? What's our LPR policy? And what's the audit trail? And I will just add one more thing on, is that the 30-day rolling basis for footage is one aspect. The audit trail is forever. The audit trail does not go away.
Okay. Councilman Torrell?
So just to be sure that the cloud, when it updates and uploads into the cloud, that stays in the perpetuity for as long as we need it, correct?
So the, the footage that you saw?
Yes.
That is available for 30 days, right? So at 30 days, it's deleted. It's no longer retrievable.
So what about crimes that happen outside the window? So like I said, if we wanted to extend that, what do you think about that? Are we going to ask for an extension to like 45 days?
I think 30's good.
Do you think 30 is good?
Yeah, what we see is that most crimes, you'll potentially have a lead at that point, right? Obviously, there's going to be outliers. But that's why our standard, we, and, you know, there's different standards all across the country. Some states require 90 days, others less. But we kind of have seen that that's like that sweet spot at the moment. Obviously, the council is the one to decide on that as well, with the police department.
You know, I'm really excited about the system because, you know, I just came from investigations. And we have a huge amount of cases where we just have to close the case, right? We don't have any identifiable information that we can get a lead from. And many times, and I'm sure you guys have seen it, too, people post on social media where there's, you know, there's porch pirates, and they're, they're driving a red pickup or whatever, you know? Well, that, we can't do anything with that. You know, that's not identifiable enough for us to really to get a hold of it. And so to me, this is a big reason to have, the system is, it helps us identify specifically those people who are, you know, they're doing it over and over and over again. And a small amount of people commit a large amount of crime. But, but the second part of it is maybe a softer side to this, and that is, you know, we get people who go missing. We have senior citizens who take off to go to the grocery store, and nobody knows where they went. And for me, this is a big reason to have something that this is, now we can, we have a chance at actually finding their car.
And that's actually a very common solved story that I've seen nationwide, is the silver alerts. And just like an amber alert, every minute counts because folks are disoriented at that point. And so being able to track that vehicle within minutes is really important because they can get pretty far, and sometimes, you know, stay overnight, et cetera. So important there as well.
Yeah. Continue, Councilor Torrell.
I have one, Ms. Catherine, this is for you. So I think Councilman Ball brought up a good question about the, the privacy. And so this is not going to conflict with the Constitution because it's public information, or is it out in public that anything that can be seen can be photographed?
Right. I mean, you're driving out in public on public streets in these cases. And so I think that, that cuts into any privacy implications you may have. We do have cameras already from ODOT in the right-of-way that we learned about through some insurance tickets we got, no insurance tickets, that the city had no role in. And so they're out there already on the highways and on ODOT road, roads. But yes, if you're driving on a private, or a public street, you don't have that same right to privacy in terms of your license plate number that's out there for others to see.
Good. I'm sure it's going to come up in the conversation when we go to vote for this. I just want to get ahead of that. I got one more question.
Please.
So it's to both of you guys. So Ward 5 out east. Now, the main road into Ward 5 is Highway 9, and then maybe Franklin or Indian Hill. So do you know where it's at? So have you, when you did your, your due diligence for these 13 cameras for the ingress into Norman, did you look at all the access points coming into Norman, including Eastside Norman?
When I did the deployment plan with the major, the chief and the assistant chief and investigators, we went ad nauseam on all the different locations to where to put those.
Do we have one out there where Ward 5 is?
I think at least in Highway 9 we do.
Highway 9, all right.
Thank you.
Well, I do share that same concern about privacy, just in general. It does have a feeling of like a Big Brother-type thing with cameras everywhere. And with a good cause, of course, trying to solve crime, I think, potentially prevent it. So I think there's an argument for it for sure. But I, I think we will receive those same questions. I'm assuming a lot of these other communities will probably receive those same questions as well from their residents. And so, you know, there's always a debate about, it's for this purpose now, but does it evolve into something else that is more intrusive or whatnot? That's a debate, I guess, for future officials. But I do, it seems to be there is a, a value in this that you've shown in these examples. So I would be interested in hearing what the rest of the council thinks about it. I don't know if it would be another study session, most likely, I guess. Or what's the timeline or process we're looking at here?
Well, I do know that certainly the YouTube feed, it's available for them to watch. I do know that- I do know that pending council's support or direction, that Chief Foster has requested that these be included in next year's budget, if council so desires to move forward with the project. So it's not an immediate, we're going to purchase them tomorrow type thing, but if it's council's desire that they would be, you know, ready to go in July.
So at 2,513 of them, so 32,500 per year?
Can I kind of walk through just a little bit?
Please, dude.
So what I've offered to do, which we've done with, doing with Dell City, Midwest City, Moore Admin Police Department, is we'll do 45 to 60-day demo program that goes in the ground with no obligation. If they don't work and they don't prove what they want to do, what you want them to do, we will pull them out, no harm, no foul, completely. We do have a price increase on April 1st. So if we kind of walk through the timeline, you're not looking at getting cameras in until mid-May, early June. It would not affect this year's budget at all. But that's something that I've kind of made clear, not as a sales pitch, but so that you're aware there's a price increase on April 1st.
From 2,500 per camera?
From 2,500 per camera to 3,000 per camera.
Okay. Councilor Ball?
And do we have a price, will that be locked in for a certain amount of time?
So most-
So 13 to 25, it's going to be 32,500?
So most organizations or departments or cities in Oklahoma that I deal with can only sign a one-year contract. So I do a 12-month contract with a renewable option at the same existing place.
Okay, so we would be getting in at the 2,500 price if we did it this year?
And in full disclosure, there is a one-time implementation fee, which is a site survey, A11 markings, we do everything, which is 350 per camera right now. So I want to make sure everything is above board.
And the police department is proposing that this would come, or would be a potential budget increase for the year, for the police department's budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there, I mean, there's always a downside to something. What is something we should be on the lookout in your experience with this system throughout the country? Are there things we should be concerned about?
I wouldn't say with the system-
I know it's your own product, you want to say it's a bad-
No, no, that's a great question. I wouldn't say there's any, the system sells itself, right? In the sense of police officers will see a return on investment immediately on investigations. I think you guys hit on something that was really important, just making sure that part of the plan of the launch is making sure folks know what these are for. I think that's super helpful. It's something that we encourage with the transparency portal. Your police chief has already said he wants to use that. So just making sure, you know, working with us and with the police department, we're happy to show the words out there that they know, this is for solving crime, this is what it does, this is what it doesn't do, right? And so that makes sure that the community's on board as well. I think that that's an important thing. Because not, people will see a random camera and they won't necessarily know, or they will think that they are getting a ticket. Maybe that's good for speeding, but yeah.
Okay, appreciate that. So next steps would be coming to the full council for a first reading? Or we're trying to do this before the budget in June, is that what I, what I understand?
It would just be, you could come back to council just to get direction for, with the full council, but honestly, for the cost of the installation is pretty minimal. I'm sure that could be found within current budgeted funds.
So we may not need to approve?
And just again, in full disclosure, that our price increase also has now a sliding scale for installation. So if we have your existing pole and no permit required, it is $0. If we use a permit in your existing pole, it's then $350. If we need our pole and a city permit, it's $700.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions by council? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming to Norman and giving us the presentation. I appreciate the information. I think, see what the rest of the council-
Good presentation, thank you.
Has to say about it when they get back and-
Thank you for your time.
We'll look forward to seeing more info about it later.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay. Item number two on the agenda this afternoon, evening, is a continued discussion regarding a water rate increase. And I believe we have staff here to give a, lead the discussion. Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, we just come to you tonight to follow up. Councilmember Tortorello asked us at the end of the last meeting, we all were kind of leaning towards the second option that we were looking at. And he asked, what did the hybrid or something in the middle of that look like? And so we went back to our consultants and came up with another option, just to kind of see where it lines up with the first two that we showed at the last meeting.
Alright.
Okay, well, again, thank you guys so much for your time. I think Chris set the stage pretty good for what we're going to discuss tonight, so we'll just kind of jump in. So three main things that we want to touch on, we've talked about revenue requirements and cost of service, so we'll jump into the rates, then talk probably what we have for our schedule to move forward with. And then a council member brought up a question about the low-income form process, so we'll talk about what we're doing to help improve that a little bit. Okay, so jumping into the rates, so what you see here in this table is we've got current rates there towards the left. So current rates over here on the left, the alternative one, which looked at trying to increase the base charge and the volumetric charges proportionately, so the across-the-board option. Alternative 2, which is the increased fixed charge recovery option, where we looked at getting more revenue from fixed charges versus the volume charge. And then, as Chris mentioned, Alternative 1A, which is really the new thing that you guys are seeing tonight, the kind of middle-of-the-road option between those two. So not as much, not as much on the fixed charge as Alternative 2, and a little bit more on the volume charge than Alternative 2. So right there in the middle. Won't read those off to you, what those numbers are, but just, okay, if we look at, okay, what does that mean for our customers? So this chart or this graph here shows three different water usage options for our customers. So looks at low usage and comparing the three rate alternatives. They're all going to be real similar, $5 to $6 a month for 5,000 gallons per month usage, which is about 2/3 of the bills that we issue. And then if you look at the middle one, which is more summer usage, people might be irrigating a little bit more. That's about 90% of our bills for 10,000 gallons, roughly $8 to $12 a month increase, depending on which option we select. And then if we look at the really high usage in the summer, which would be 20,000 gallons, you might see $17 to $25 increase of that per month. So again, the 5,000 gallons a month is about 2/3 of the bills. 10,000 gallons a month is 90% of the bills. So most of our customers fall here even more, or fall in this one, and then this one catches about 95%, so. Okay, so if we break it apart even further and we look at, okay, just the base charge component of our bill. So here's the blue showing where our base charge is now, so that's showing the $6 a month plus the $1.50 capital improvement charge. If we look at Alternative 1, we still stay in the same classification or, you know, rank in relation to other peer cities. And then Alternative 2 and Alternative 1A, even with those higher fixed charges, it puts us ahead of Midwest City, but we're still, you know, we're still the fourth one, or, you know, third or fourth, depending on how you look at this. And we're still well below the average, which is about $17 if we look at the other communities.
So Moore's base fee is $20 a month, is that what I understand?
Yes, sir.
And Newcastle's base fee is $34 a month?
Yes.
Wow. It's heavy duty, okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we double-checked it. Our consultant looked at, you know, peer cities, and then we also double-checked it. So these are ones in the metro.
Okay.
So if we look at now, okay, that was the base charge. If we look at adding the volume component in, our existing is the lowest, as you can see down here on the bottom. Tulsa's just above us. Whichever rate alternative we choose, we will be second. So still below a lot of them, obviously below the average, but still fairly low compared to other cities. I'm going to wear you guys out on these graphs, sorry. So if we, if we look at the 10,000 gallons, similar thing, we're the lowest currently. If we do Alternative 1A or Alternative 2, which is more fixed charge, so what you'd see is fixed charge helps us when there's not as much water usage. And then when we get higher water usage, then Alternative 1 is the one that starts outpacing it. So that's why you see it move up. It still would be less than half of the other cities. You know, it'd be in the bottom half of the rankings for Alternative 1. But we're still below the average on all of them. Now, if we look at taking, just, or taking water and adding in sewer and trash on the residential side, so we're still just talking residential, we're lowest, and whichever alternative we choose, we still would remain the lowest. And I'm going, I'm talking really fast, I believe, so any questions regarding residential? Similar stuff that you guys have seen before, just added that middle option in there, so. Okay, jumping over to commercial, similar, we're adding in the middle option. So you can see that the volume is a little bit higher than this one, but it's less than this one because we're covering more on the fixed charge. For, just full disclosure, we did catch an error from the last presentation, so if you compare the fixed charge, Alternative 2 for commercial, this is a different number than we had when we came and presented to you in February, but did confirm with the consultant that this is the correct number. And then irrigation matches exactly to what we showed for residential because that's how our rate structure is currently set up. If we look at commercial comparisons, so we're looking at just water here, looking at 10,000 gallons usage, which is about 70% of the commercial bills we issue. We're lowest currently, and whichever rate alternative we choose, we would go to fourth. Still below the average and cost increase of about $12 and $19 a month based on this particular type of business. If we look at comparison, including sewer, I didn't include trash in this just because trash varies from city to city. We do trash ourselves, so Oklahoma City, they make them use a private company, so it wasn't an apple to apple, so we just did water and sewer on this. So this is 1-inch meter, customer using, our commercial business using 10,000 gallons for water, 8,000 for sewer, which is 8% coming back. You can see we're lowest currently, and instead of us going to fourth, we would go to, go to third on the ranking, whichever rate option we show. So we're kind of clumped in there. So again, talking really fast, but that's kind of commercial in a nutshell. Is there any questions regarding commercial? Okay. So I think that kind of brings us to a decision point. So last time when we talked, I think there was fairly good consensus that people wanted to go with Alternative 2, even with the middle-of-the-road option is, just want to kind of get a pulse as that we're, the council members that are present are leaning towards.
Yeah, I'm still there.
Okay.
Middle-of-the-road.
Basically-
You're there, you're still on Alt 2?
Yeah, because that was the most stable of the options.
Tell them that, we were trying to get to a 25%.
Yeah, so as a utility, because, you know, water years can vary, if we get a lot of rain, we don't sell as much water, drought years are good, but we get a little more revenue stability if we do Alternative 2 because our fixed charge goes to about 22% roughly. 25 is an industry metric that was recommended by Raff Tullis.
And you have to vote on these all the time, so I'm still for Alternative 2.
Okay, very good. We appreciate that.
Councilor Tortorello?
I am too. I mean, look, looking at the numbers for the third-largest city of Oklahoma, I mean, our prices aren't that bad with any of the options that we've seen here right now. But I think we all agree that Alternative 2 was the one we wanted, right? I can't recall back, I mean, that was what we decided. That was it, that was just an observation. And thank you for providing the alternative. I was, someone asks, and so I was obligated to ask you guys to provide that. I can see there's no difference, I mean, really.
It's middle.
Yeah, it's in the middle. It's negligible, I think, at this point. And one of the things, I was talking to Nathan earlier, if you get closer to that 25% coverage, then that means you know that money will come in the door whether you sell a drop of water or not. And that covers, it's really close to covering our loan payments. And I know Oklahoma City always strives to have their base rate set, so it guarantees and covers their loan payments. And so that, and that's good, financial sound planning, right? And that's kind of what Raff Tullis was telling us, we probably need to get a little more of our base rate up to be more in line with that. Thank you.
Residents, customers, they still would have the ability to, for savings by using less water. There will be a little higher base rate, but the more you, or as you go over that, you would still have the opportunity to save if you lowered your consumption still. Or there's still even an incentive for high-end users to maybe not use as much. Is that still the case with this?
Sure, yeah. And look at those rates, though, they're, they still, it's tiered, and they got, they go up pretty good, pretty substantially if you use over 20,000 gallons.
And I was going to say that what we're coming up on too is going to be an exploration of a low-income form, right?
Yes. Did you like, have you checked it out yet? We just posted it today. Anthony reviewed it, we're all good. What we did is we, Councilmember Grant brought to our attention that we currently had a four form. Every form needed to be notarized, one for the sewer, the water, the trash, and the recycle. Difficult, probably. And so we went and looked at that, and one of Anthony's people said, you know, yeah, we thought this could all be put on one form, have four boxes, you could check which ones apply. That way they only have to get one notary. And then we'll let people know, he has staff that have their notaries, and we will do that for free if they'll bring their document down and sign in front of our folks. So we posted on the website, gave the instructions, and hopefully that will make that more simple process. I like that one-stop place, one-stop shopping.
Cut some red tape. Councilor Tortorello?
Hey, so what is the threshold for low income? It's on my little table on the website. It changes once a year, every April, they update it. We get the numbers-
It's basically the Section 8 guideline.
Section 8 guidelines. Get it from Lisa Craig.
30% of income. Okay, yeah, that's a great idea. Appreciate Councilor Grant for suggesting that. Anywhere we can make paperwork easier for folks, I think it's a good thing. Councilor Ball, I know this is all new for you. Do you have an opinion formed about it yet?
No, no, you kind of touched on it. I mean, the lower base rate is going to give an individual the option of having the lowest bill if they conserve water and don't use as much water. But it's really kind of negligible. I mean, the difference of what, $3.20 between the highest and lowest on the base rate? So, yeah, so I, yeah, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
And we're happy to, I apologize, and we're happy to visit with you more about some of this because you're coming in fresh, so we can, yeah, just let us know if you'd like to meet.
Take it from staff that Alternative 2 would be your preferred?
Yeah.
The most stability.
Yes, because of that.
And just to remind everybody watching, it's been almost nine years since the last water rate increase. And we had one in 2006 and one in 2015, and that's it. Since the year, since 1999, I think there might have been one in 1999 or something, and then 2006. So two in this whole century.
We say we've had four votes.
Four attempts.
We passed two and lost two.
Yeah. So, and that, yeah, like I've said before, I would challenge anybody to find another city, probably in the whole United States, that has gone so far in between without raising rates. And so, given our unique setup, so I would just encourage our residents to understand we don't ask for it unless it's absolutely needed. And so. So are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Nathan, you want to go ahead and talk them through this part? I think last time you all met in February, we talked about that June election. And so that's what he's giving you dates for up there.
Yeah, so we'll, I think similar to what we did last year, we'll bring forward two ordinances for our first reading on March 28th, so not this coming docket, but the following docket. And then we'll do second reading and our presentation April 11th. And then, we'll do second reading and our presentation April 11th, and then the vote would be June 13th.
June 13th. Budget meeting that day?
We have a doctrine of budget that day.
That, the final one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything further from anybody? Okay, well, then I'll look forward on the 28th, full council, first reading. Okay.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And our meeting is adjourned.